Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's ANC 34G regularly scheduled meeting. Our meeting tonight will be virtual only. So if you know anyone that went to the community center, tell them to go online. We'll start out with Commissioner introductions, discussion of the meeting procedures, and adoption of the agenda. In terms of Commissioner introductions, I'll start from my screen, left to right with Commissioner Goslin.
Hi, I'm Peter Goslin. I'm the Commissioner for District 6, which is largely the west side of Connecticut back to friendship heights. Welcome.
And my name is Lisa Gore. I'm the Chair of ANC 34G and Commissioner for 34G 01, which is all of Hawthorne and parts portions of Barnaby Woods. Thank you for coming. Commissioner Nash?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jim Nash, Commissioner for the 3rd District, which is the most southeast area of our ANC.
Commissioner Zeldin?
Michael Zeldin, 3GO4 Lafayette and its environs.
And Commissioner Sherman?
Good evening, everybody. Bruce Sherman, I represent District 02, which is along with Lisa's the easternmost of the districts by Rock Creek Park, north of Military up to Tennyson and over to Utah.
All right. Thank you for coming, Commissioners. And when Commissioner Lynch gets here, we'll let him introduce himself. Regarding meeting procedures, if everyone can remain muted until it's time for you to speak. If you want to speak on a topic, please use the raise your hand feature. And if you're looking at your screen, that's at the kind of center right under reactions. If you click on that reactions, there's a button that says raise hand. We are going to allow residents opportunity to speak. Two minutes with the one minute follow-up. The same procedure goes for Commissioners. And I would ask that everyone remain cordial and respectful of everyone's participation in the meeting. In terms of the agenda Commissioners, are there any changes to the agenda?
I think we're dropping, Bruce, you confirm this, I think we're dropping the 7:55 discussion of Washington Gas advance notice and we're pushing that off to the next meeting.
That's correct. Their community engagement person indicated that she would not be available tonight, but would be able to join us next time. Commissioner Gore, just to the members of the community that are here, if anyone has issues, I'm representing, of course, my constituents, from whom I've heard lots of issues related to Washington Gas installations and repairs of roads after those installations. So that's what we will be discussing with their representative. If anyone else however has concerns and will publicize this further in the next agenda, they should plan on attending the next meeting on July 8th.
All right.
Any other changes to the agenda Commissioners?
No, but I noticed that the new Lafayette principal doesn't seem to be.
Derek, I can barely hear you.
I noticed the new Lafayette principal does not get on. I hope that she does show. I guess that's Michael Zeldin's.
Okay. Any other agenda changes? Okay, I move that we adopt the agenda as changed. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposition? None, I see no extensions. Carrie's 5-0, 5-0-0. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent approval and consent agenda. The only thing I believe we have on a consent agenda to approve is the minutes from June 10th. And we can do this, I think, in order to shorten the meeting. Because I know I have minor, these are grammatical, just minor stuff. I know Commissioner Nash has some. We can adopt these as amended. And Bruce, send you the hard copy version of what those amendments are, edits are, as opposed to go line by line. I think that's going to take too much time, especially, you know, with our audience here.
Let me say, my amendment isn't exactly grammatical, but it's a clarification. I just, I wanted to be sure the minutes said that my, I was complaining to Womata at the hearing. The way the minutes are now, it sounds like I'm complaining to the ANC. That's all.
Okay, got it.
So Bruce, if you could send us the word version, we can just, okay. So with that, I move that we adopt the consent agenda and to include the minutes for June 10th as edited, as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. 5-0-0. All right. Next portion of the agenda is our resident forum, which we allow for people to, in the community, ask anything of the ANC or raise any issue that you might want to raise that's not on the agenda. Sometimes we have community members speak. I see Sergeant Koenig is here from MPD. So if you would like to speak during this portion, please raise your hand. Sergeant Koenig?
Sorry, I'm here. I'm here. I'm not used to using Zoom.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. You got some updates for us?
So for the past month, we've had a total of 15 crimes, which eight were theft from autos and motor vehicles, stolen cars are up. Compared to last year this time, theft draws are considerably down. We had 29 last year at this time. We did do our community walk at Lafayette Park a couple of weeks ago, and we're still finding people are leaving a lot of stuff in their cars. Computers, purses, electronics, suitcases. So we are still pushing out officers to hand out flyers. And they still have the program for the steering locks that the department gives out free for Hyundai and Kia owners. And they're still, we're still pushing out the Apple tags and the Google Tiles for people to put this place on personal items or their cars.
Okay. And can I ask you a question? We recently had protesters, I don't know if you're aware, on Van Hazen Street. I was over there talking to neighbors on Sunday. Can you describe the procedures? And I know there was a post in a listserv that kind of went over if protesters are protesting at a private residence. Some of the things that they're required to do, which includes contact the command center. Can you talk about that and also talk a little bit about how we can monitor or how MPD or whatever government agency monitors the noise level of protest? This particular one at some times seems to have gotten kind of loud where people, you know, on other streets have heard them. I was told there's a siren that's being used that has audible, I don't know what you call it, but the sound goes really, really up high pitched then comes back down. How are neighbors supposed to handle that?
Are we talking about the ones up at the Israel Embassy too? Or the one?
Well, particularly the one on Van Hazen because that's a private residence.
When we, last week I went up there. It's like 6:00 AM, I was working overtime. And we SOD, I was working the Civil Disturbance Unit and SOD contacted us to go up there. And soon as we got up there, they left. But the people who measures the noise is going to be ECRA.
Hmm, really?
Yeah, because they have dosimeters, I believe.
Okay.
There isn't a DC.
Well, Department of Buildings.
I'm sorry, they forgot, they changed their name. But I believe those are the people who have the dosimeters to come out to do the noise readings.
So can I just follow up on that? If the noise, because I've heard these two just out walking in the neighborhood and I wondered what was happening. And I've read the listserv post. If the noise level exceeds what's permitted, there could be action taken, but not action taken due to the fact that they're protesting.
Yeah, I'd have to look up that answer of what the noise levels would have to be and get back with you. Because I don't know that top of the hicks. I don't think the department has anyone trained in the dosimeters that read the noise at the decimal levels.
Right.
Okay. Wow. All right. So we'll have to, is there another unit within MPD that? And so you just said that no one you believe is trained at MPD. Is there another unit that we should check with?
I should get back with you on that one.
Okay.
See if there is one. Yeah.
And they're also, from my understanding, required to contact MPD a certain unit in the event they want to protest at a private residence.
I believe it would be SOD again.
Yeah.
Special Operations Division.
Okay. And there's nowhere where that's like posted publicly so that the general public has an awareness. This is what it seems like it should be to me. This is just from the world of Lisa. If somebody is protesting my neighbor's house and they coming at 7:00 in the morning, if I could go and visit my mom, I maybe go visit my mom in Winchester that morning. So I don't have to hear them scream that I can sleep in. But it would seem like it would be a courtesy to the general public if they got to notify MPD that I'm going to be at ex-resident protesting, that that would be a public, public, public knowledge. That could be posted, shared with maybe the ANC's or I don't know. Does, how does that process work with MPD?
For most parts, they let and everyone protest.
But there's no general public notification, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Commissioner Gore, if you have a further question on this, go ahead. I was going to change the topic quickly with Sergeant.
I got a lot of questions on it, but I'll delay because I think more research. No, it's okay, because I think I need to get with another, get with SOD if possible and kind of shake this out.
Okay. Sergeant Koenig, this is a question about to what you were just referencing, car break-ins and stolen cars. So in my district on Moreland Place, two weeks ago, there was in one overnight period, three cars broken into and one car stolen. The car was recovered relatively quickly, but it was totaled when they, when they discovered it. Often these, as you well know better than I, of course, these incidents, instances of car break-ins go in waves. Have we seen, I haven't seen reporting and I get the police reports every day. So I think the answer to this is no, there haven't been a lot subsequent to that, a lot of additional break-ins, at least in PSA 201. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, like I said, like if you look at like last year at this time, there were 29.
Yeah, right, right.
This year, there's eight.
Right.
Going back a month. So they are, they are down.
Yeah, okay. I was just thinking in the last couple of weeks, if there had been any that escaped my notice, I'm thinking no. And therefore, you know, we are not seeing, we saw last fall, which was a steady wave of car break-ins, where virtually every week there were break-ins, you know, in my neighborhood, my, my, my single member district. So I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions from Sergeant Koenig? Okay. Any other community members have issues they want to bring up? All right. So we'll move on to, thank you Sergeant.
I'll look into notifying, about the notifying MPD in reference to the protest just for you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too. All right. Next, Commissioner Zeldin. Welcome in discussion with the incoming principal from Lafayette. Do you know if she, is she, is that you Katie? Okay, she's on.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Can you, can you promote her?
Yeah.
Good evening. Can everybody hear?
Yes.
All right? All right, sounds good. Well, thank you so
She froze.
So much for having me here as introduced the Lafayette community.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
You're freezing a little bit.
Yeah.
Can you see if you can get a better connection?
Michael, do you want to introduce her while we're waiting on her to come back?
Sure. Katie is the new principal, former principal who served with distinction over the last eightish years is moving on to a new position within DC Public Schools. And Katie has been selected to be the new principal, I think. Katie, you're a Stanford graduate, yes?
Yes, I am. And honestly, the Wi-Fi cutting out was great because it allowed me to hear you brag about me. So please go on.
I know that because that's what my wife went. So thank well. She went to Stanford and my wife is so smart, then you must be so smart. Isn't that one of those syllogisms or something?
That's very generous, but I will accept it in this forum. Thank you so much.
You, I think what would be most helpful if you introduce yourself a little bit beyond my introduction and then lay out for us what your priorities are. And one of the reasons that we asked you here is we're trying to make sure from the very outset that we have a positive working relationship, that we can help you in any way we can and hopefully we can turn to you when we need help.
Yes, thank you. And I'm so grateful for that. So I'll tell you a little bit about me and my former lives and why the ANC relationships are also so important to me. So again, my name is Principal Proll. I'm so excited to be coming up to Lafayette. Most recently, I've been at Hyde Addison with Dr. Hooks as his assistant principal. And I've had a wonderful experience there and just love that community dearly. My background, my first degree is from Vanderbilt in early childhood education and child studies. And then I got my master's in educational policy and leadership from Stanford. So that's a bit about my backward, background. I have worked in bilingual education in both Arabic and English bilingual schools and Spanish and English bilingual schools. And so working with multilingual learners is also a special passion of mine. And then before I was an assistant principal, I was at Central Office doing community engagement work, where I was the CAT specialist working with wards two and three. So I know the, some of the ward two and three ANC's pretty well. And as well as the Ward Three Education Network has just been such wonderful advocates for our city and really great thought partners for school leaders and teachers alike. So really excited to do this community engagement work and very eager to have an ongoing partnership with the ANC, but just the broader community. I think it's really important that we recognize that our schools do not operate in isolation and that we are so much stronger when we have neighbors and parents and aunties and grandparents. And really all the stakeholders there to help make sure our students have everything that they need to be successful. So in light of that, the three leadership priorities I have by year one that I am kind of using as my North Star to make sure that everybody knows what I'm aiming towards and can help check in along the way is I want to make sure that I'm putting all my eggs in the basket of building these trusting relationships. But I'm thinking really strategically about where the best opportunities for shared leadership are so that one person is not trying to run this giant ship by themselves. And then I'm really creating an overarching plan that's going to leverage the strengths that Lafayette already has, of which there are many, so that we're really, we're really driving student success in the most optimal ways. So all the details between behind those three priorities are actually outlined in an entry plan that I'm preparing to share on my formal transition date, which is July 1st. So I kind of hit the ground running. But you can be on the lookout for that entry plan that kind of has key dates and look fours. So that as we go out through the year, you're like, I haven't heard from Principal Proll for a while. What are they up to? And you can kind of check in on the ways that I'm making sure that those three priorities really stay alive, right? We know that there are lots of things that happen in the day-to-day life of a school, but we really want to make sure that we keep our eye on the prize. I think one thing that I'm really proud of and excited about and grateful for with regards to our staff is that I offered the opportunity for all staff members to schedule a one-on-one time with me before they left for summer break. And I think I've met with every single staff member. It has been hugely helpful to understand who they are. I asked them all, what are the things that are already going well at Lafayette that we need to keep continuing? And where are the opportunities where you think we can grow together moving forward? And so if you know or see a Lafayette staff member, please feel free to extend my gratitude. I know there are a million things that they have on their plates at the end of the school year. And so their willingness to take that time to meet with me individual, individually, it means a lot. And I think it's going to go a long way in setting me up for a successful transition. I do have one kind of community update and ask of you all already in the spirit of partnership. So as many of you probably know, there are enrollment projections that DCPS gives every school. And those are the number of students that we are aimed to enroll. Lafayette's this year is 946. And so oftentimes Lafayette has a pretty big influx in early August of inboundery families that enroll. One thing that I would love for y'all's support with is that there are inboundery families, so folks who live in a geographic region that already know their kids are going to attend Lafayette next year. It's really helpful for our planning and helps us to ensure that class sizes stay as low as possible. If they go ahead and enroll now, our team, despite what others may think, is they're all summer long. I was there today and the main office staff is processing enrollments on an ongoing basis. It'll also go ahead and queue them in to start receiving my principal communications, which will go out weekly to enrolled families. And they'll be in the know of all the cool things that are coming up, popsicles with the principals. We're going to have playdates for the family so that they can get excited to come back to school. So really anything that you can do to encourage folks who already know they're coming to go ahead and submit that paperwork so that we have them on our rosters will go a long way, both in my personal transition, to make sure I know who's coming in and can start planning accordingly, but also in the school operations. So again, thank you and I welcome an ongoing partnership. If you guys need anything, please don't hesitate to email me directly with any questions about the school and I'm happy to take questions now as well.
So Katie, one thing and then we'll open up to questions. Have you been briefed at all on ANC past resolutions and involvement with Lafayette? There was Military Road School, there was DGAS physical plant issues, there was playground issues. There's the ongoing field controversy about plastic versus natural grass. So if there's anything in, in, in that space that you want to be further briefed on, just reach out to Chairman Gore and any of us can sit down with you, come over to the school and, and chat. And similarly, we have put budget resolutions in to make sure that you are fully funded. And so if there's stuff that we can do to assist with therapy or anybody else in, in central office around that, please let us know because we'd like to be able to be an advocate as well as partner for whatever needs you have.
I appreciate that so much. Yes, I have been briefed to answer your first question. Am I the expert that you all are on it? Not yet, but I have been briefed and I, and I also just appreciate, I think that the, the very tactful advocacy towards the budget was very impactful and appreciated. So thank you so much and I, and I will not be a stranger if those things come up.
Questions, Lisa?
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, Katie, welcome and thank you so much. I love your energy and your enthusiasm and I really look forward to working with you as well. I'm just two blocks away.
Oh, wonderful neighbors.
Member district. All three of our kids went to Lafayette. You know, a few years back now, my wife was a long-term substitute teacher there and very much involved in the annual auction and all that stuff. So we're very invested. We've all been following and I've been following on behalf of my constituents, the budget for Lafayette. Can you tell us what the final budget figure is after council action? And the percentage reduction, if you happen to know that Katie, that Lafayette faces for next year?
Yes. So we did get a budget restoration. That's very helpful. I am in the process right now of finalizing with the DCPS Central Office where those funds will go to. But it is a substantial amount of money, more than 400,000 that will go a long way and, and, and go a long way to making us almost whole again. So I, my plan is hopefully all that will be approved and I'll be able to announce that in my formal transition email on the first.
Okay, great. There were eight positions that had been identified that would need to be cut if the budget were not restored. And I know, of course, the council, based on school, the school's first act and budgeting process sought to restore a lot of these funds.
Yes.
So hopefully that's going to happen. A number of constituents, again, have written to me directly to ask what more they can do and their concern about the budget. So thank you for that. I'll look forward to.
Thank you and thank them. I think the way that you all handled it was really effective and again, much appreciated.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you.
Katie, one, one more thing is, have you been briefed on how we communicate with the community? You have your own, your own newsletter that goes to families. Many of the Commissioners have their own individual constituent newsletters and emails and Jerry Malz have one and then we communicate through the Chevy Chase listserv, Google Groups and Chevy Chase Chatter. So again, if you haven't been briefed on the way we try to communicate with the community at large, let us know and we can fill you in.
That's wonderful. I think the logistical question is who is the best person, if I have a message, I'd like to help get your all's support circulating. Who do I reach out to about that?
Well, my, my personal view is I, we work through the chair. You're, you're in my single member district, so theoretically I lead on that. But Lisa, if you'd like us to work through the chair, I'm happy to do that and then we'll push it out among us.
Yeah.
All of us have, all of us have Lafayette families in our single member districts.
Yeah. And I was going to suggest maybe Katie, if you got, you know, 15 minutes to put maybe me and Michael on your agenda, we could stop by the office and just have a quick discussion with you about some of the logistics that we do here in ANC and just, you know, some of the, as he said, I think, you know, the understanding of some of the resolutions and some of the stances that we take in terms of advocacy for Lafayette. But just a quick, you know, 15, 20 minute meeting, when you get time and when you get settled, so we can introduce ourselves and kind of go over those logistical issues.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think it's also, I mean, from my previous work, understanding that like the advocacy work that ANC's do is very different than the professional work that principals do in leading the school. So I definitely appreciate that y'all seem to already have understood the advocacy versus the leadership roles.
Yeah.
I look forward to continuing that as well.
Sounds great. All right. And I want to extend just a little time too, to any community members that might have any questions for our new incoming Lafayette principal. This won't be the last time that she's on a call. So if you don't have anything for her today, that's fine. But seeing no hands go up, Katie, thank you so much for joining us at ANC 34G. We'll be getting in touch with you and so excited to work with you. I'm a Lafayette mom.
Oh, wonderful.
Absolutely.
Tell all your friends to re-enroll, okay?
Oh, definitely. Will do. They love Lafayette. We all do. Oh, I have one hand up. Tracy?
Sorry, I couldn't find my little up hand thing. But I just, my name is Tracy Bowen. And I've heard wonderful things about you, Katie, and the, including from staff over at Lafayette. It's just been very exciting transition, it seems like. But you know, one thing I'm just going to share is something that I've been, I live across the street on Cassada Street and we've been very active around the issue of the artificial turf in the playfield. And I just joined, I don't know if you guys talked about that at all. But I would like to share that it has been very important to us and I know a lot of community members to, let's keep that field with natural grass. We would like to see that. And I'm just sharing, if you ever want to meet and talk about that, we would love to do that with you as well around.
Yeah, my understanding is the stance of the historic school leadership that I will maintain is that this is an important issue that folks kind of fall on both sides with. The school can operate either way it goes. So we will support, you know, the, the district's leadership and kind of hearing the perspectives of all the community members and we will support kind of however it goes forward. But I definitely understand and have kind of been briefed already on what an important issue it is for everyone. So I appreciate you raising that and I know it will continue to come up. But I think the stance of the school will continue to be that we will teach the kids and love on the kids and keep them safe no matter what happens.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to throw it out there in case you were ever interested in learning more about what's going on. But great and thank you for everything you're gonna be doing for the kids in our community.
Of course, I'm so excited and I'm so excited to get to know you in person as well.
My daughter just graduated from DIL, so we're kind of done at Lafayette.
Oh, no. Okay, well, you'll probably see us if you live close by doing fire drills and stuff, so maybe we'll catch you in person.
Thank you.
So Katie, one thing just I want to say thanks to Damian and Janai and Sharona for helping make this. They were great to work with.
They're a wonderful team, yes.
All right, thank you, Team Lafayette.
Thank you all.
Next time. All right, thank you, guys. All right, next on the agenda, Commissioner Goslin discussed an impossible vote of the traffic calming measures on Livingston Street.
Thank you. I want to alert the commissioners that I want to make two small changes to the draft resolution as posted. Neighbors point out that where these traffic calming measures presumably speed humps are most needed are in the thirty-nine-hundred block and the forty-one-hundred block. As you travel from Western down to Connecticut, the traffic jam from Thirty-Ninth Street to Connecticut Avenue takes care of speeding on that block. So we don't need traffic, uh, speed humps because we've got cars in the way, so there's not a problem. This is a long-running issue. I've been working with the neighborhood since I became an ANC commissioner. We were, we've met with D-Dot, we've done walkthroughs with D-Dot. We were told this process was gonna take a long time, but there's a long time and then there's a long, long time. We first made a request for traffic calming. The requests were made in twenty-twenty-one and again in twenty-twenty-two. So after a year, we were told, we were told at the twenty-twenty-two walkthrough, oh, this has to go through our new traffic safety input prioritization model, version one. It was sent through that process and a year in, we started writing to D-Dot and saying, so what's happening? And they said, oh, we've just fielded version two and you have to go to the back of the line. In the more recently, two streets, one in partially in my single-member district and another very close to it. And Legation Street, thirty-seven-hundred block, Legation and McKinley both got traffic calming measures, got speed humps installed. Now, I am not for a moment saying they are not needed on Legation. But what astounded me and really angered me is that there was no public discussion of this. There was no, I was not consulted, but it's not whether I was consulted or not that's important. This just was not an issue with many people and suddenly there are these, presumably this TSI model has spit this out as something to do. Ditto on McKinley Street. So what I've done is I've met again with neighbors. We have agreed to redouble our efforts and most importantly, that's gonna be that neighbors are going to report to the police every single sideswiped car near miss. We have not done that adequately enough and they know it and we're gonna work on that ourselves. The other thing we're trying to do, and I'm asking for this commission's support in doing, is I filed a FOIA to understand what the, what went into the decision about so far about Livingston, ditto Legation and McKinley. So what I asked for in this resolution is that you, three things that you respond to, that you support, that the commission supports, the FOIA request and ask D-Dot to quickly respond to it. That the, that it requests that the department move the Livingston Street request up in the PSI queue. This is exactly what we asked for at our last meeting with regard to a sidewalk segment on Thirty-second Place Northwest, which has also been tied up by Commissioner Zeldin, who was pointing on that request, said that neighbors said it's been tied up for several years, even though it's just a replacement. It's just the installation of a segment that has sidewalk on either side of it, no trees. There doesn't seem to be anything terribly controversial about it. So we ask that you support, I look for your support for the FOIA. I look for your support for moving the Livingston Street consideration up. So that at least we get a firm answer. One of the problems here is that we're constantly told it's in process. We've been told it's in process for almost three years. And finally, that we, this ANC recommends installing traffic calming measures. And again, I will, I will say on the thirty-nine-hundred block and the forty-one-hundred block, there is no Forty-first Street. So that there is no, it's two continuous blocks. One past the Chevy Chase Playground and then the next block down, which is a long block. And one of the problems with it is because it's so long and because drivers already know that there's traffic near Connecticut, they race down that section. With that, I'm happy to answer questions. I do believe that there are a number of neighbors on the line and if any of them would like to speak, I'd be happy to elevate them. You, as the chair has said, if you want to speak, raise your hand.
So Nash is first and just to remind folks, the raise your hand function, middle right of your screen under reactions, we'll start with Nash then Robert Buza. Hope I pronounced your name right.
And remind people that they're not speaking, go into mute themselves, please.
Yep, yep, stay on mute until you're asleep. Okay, Commissioner Nash?
Yeah, I have a question, Peter, and that you said that they have decided to put speed bumps on McKinley Street, but they haven't actually done that, right?
I think they have. My understanding of the way that went is that it's is that they said that they were gonna do it. They ended up with a good deal of community objection. They reversed themselves and said they weren't gonna do it and I thought that they had then installed them.
I go on McKinley frequently. I've never seen one there. Do you know what block it was supposed to be on or?
I'll track that down, Jim.
Okay.
But we've been, it's just an example of, still, the question is, they make decisions presumably that are passed through this impartial equity reproducing, you know, impersonal system. And then, you know, it's the oddest set of outcomes that, so. But I will track that down. I'm sorry, I may not have done my homework enough on that.
Just a clarification, Chair Gore, that on McKinley between Pride Branch and Nevada, if that's the stretch, Commissioner Goslin, you're talking about, there are speed tables now that they put in about what, two months ago?
Yeah.
So there are those definitely on McKinley and those are relatively new.
That's what I think I'm talking about, not in your.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, you're right, yeah. I hadn't thought of those as speed bumps because they're not that high, but that may be.
Tables, yeah. Robert?
All right, thank you very much, Steve, for your time this evening. Really want to thank ANC Goslin for raising this issue. It's been a very personal issue for many of us on Livingston Street. There's a number of residents with young families and children and also residents of all ages as well, but this has really been, I think, a fairly uniting topic amongst neighbors in areas. Peter mentioned the thirty-nine-hundred block is an extra-long block. It spans about two blocks long from Thirty-Ninth Street all the way to Forty-first Street. So as a result, people have an ability to gain a lot of speed. And if there's a green light at Forty-first Street and Reno, they will try to speed through that as well. And so as a result, you have a fairly residential road with people trying to speed through it, going between Western and Connecticut or trying to shortcut in between. This has led to a number of accidents over the years. There has been one really severe accident where one car was going so fast, they hit a parked car. The parked car pushed back into a car behind it. That's how fast they were going and completely totaled the car. There's other incidents of totaled cars at the intersection of forty-one-hundred, sorry, at Livingston and Reno Road. Plus countless, and talking to neighbors, countless unreported sideswipes. Both of my cars have been sideswiped on the street. I know a number of others have lost mirrors and other damages to their vehicles that are parked on the street. In addition, on the forty-one-hundred block, that's actually where the Chevy Chase Recreation Center is and the playground and the baseball field over there. So nonetheless, it's a very, very busy and lively park, especially on the weekends. And as a result, there are constantly children traversing from Connecticut Avenue all the way to the park. So there, it's a very busy corridor, at least from the pedestrian standpoint, walking to and from that park area all the way along Livingston Street. And so as residents, we are, we've been really concerned about the number of accidents that have occurred and not even just accidents, just the number of near misses that have occurred and the number of observed speeding vehicles on the street. And so we really believe that some sort of speed mitigation measure, whether it's speed bumps or.
Robert, I'm afraid your two minutes are up.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Let me, let me just follow up from what he said and just point out, Chevy Chase Playground, the Little League Field in that top lot mean that beyond the population of young people on these two blocks of Livingston, there is an immense amount of traffic. I mean, particularly when they have the water function working, which is rare. But so, so there is a lot of, there are a lot of young people walking through the street. Other residents or?
Peter, can I ask a question? Is there, can we just to move forward because we're behind time? Is there anyone that opposes this? Can we hear if there's anyone that opposes it? If not, can we move to a vote?
We have one other community member with a hand raised.
This is Amy Lair, although I'm showing up under my husband's name. I'll be quick. I just want to second everything Rob said. I live between Thirty-Ninth and Forty-first on Livingston. And there is just a constant stream of very small children under the age of four going down that street. They're not the kinds of kids who can obey rules very well. And so they dart across Forty-first, that's when people are speeding like crazy. And I'm just really concerned someone's gonna get hurt. I mean, I have two small children of my own, but this is also just, I'm concerned about everyone who uses that park. I just really wanted to reiterate that. We've been trying for three years. Your support would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I move the question. I asked for the ANC to, my fellow commissioners to support this resolution. Do I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Is Commissioner Ferguson on?
Yeah, he, I'm here.
Where is it?
Yeah, I can't see. Is your camera on?
My camera's off. I vote yes.
Okay. Six, zero, zero, it carries. All right, thank you, everyone. Well, Moda Resolution, Commissioner Nash?
Okay. I want, you all have had a chance to review this resolution. So I'll be, I'll try to also be very brief. We, I want to say that the working group on bus transit has done some outreach to the community and we have heard, we've gotten, I think, ten, we got ten responses, ten different people responded. And some of the people were not in our ANC though because of the way we did it. Within our ANC, I would say the, it seems as though more people are are in favor of keeping things the way they are, which is basically what the resolution calls for. Although there were some who did say that they would, that they want the bus off McKinley Street, that is the E-four and its replacement. Everyone is against the loss of weekend service on that E-four line. And one thing we learned from listening to people is that we hadn't thought of and it's not in the resolution, you know, maybe it could be. The new line of the E-four is going to now have two dangerous left turns on Connecticut Avenue. It's gonna have to turn left going west at McKinley in Connecticut. And it's gonna have to turn left going east at Military in Connecticut. And some people in the community disagree, were not happy about that. One other issue, the L-two will no longer go through Adams Morgan. And we did not put that in the resolution. Views are mixed on that, but you know, that's, we, that's open for debate or discussion. My own preference would be that they restore what there used to be where you had options. You know, there'd be one line that would go straight through to downtown and another line would go through Adams Morgan. Why can't we have a choice? So we could, we could put that in the resolution if that's something that, that people care about. And then another, another issue is they're gonna want, they want to remove some bus stops. Their new rule is six hundred feet between bus stops. And some people in the community are opposed to that. That's not in our resolution right now, but we could add it. If you, if you're a senior citizen, you know, that could add to your walk. And they, and it compounds the existing problem of this bus desert that they're expanding in both space and time by moving the E-four replacement down to Military and getting rid of weekend service on the E-four. And but now if you get rid of bus stops, you know, it's even farther for people to walk. So those are things that we could, we could put in and, but I'm gonna stop there. Those are some issues that weren't right in the resolution, which you've all read, but I'm open now to questions or comments.
Okay. I got a comment, but I'll start with Bernadette.
Hi, actually, my name is Megan Gibbons, but I'm with my mom here at, on her computer, so thanks. I just wanted to add, thank you, Commissioner Nash, Nash, for that. I also wanted to add that, you know, the, the fact that the E-six was taken offline. I drive, I drive an hour each way now to my job in Montgomery County, North Rockville, because I can't get to the bus stop. It's, I mean, I can't get to the, the red line to the French Arpice Metro Station. I go north, I don't go south. So I can't take a bus. I can't take the M-four to Tunley Circle. And I know that there are other people who commute north and I think it's really a shame because I really dislike driving. I dislike putting another car in the road. I, you know, for years and years, for thirty years, I've used that bus. And the fact that it was taken offline without a public hearing is something that really, really irks me. So I planned to put in some shoe leather, you know, getting my, my neighbors to respond to that Moda survey. Because I know there are more people. It used to be a full bus when people were commuting on it, so, nice.
Great, thank you. Elizabeth?
You're muted, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, can you come off mute? Let's go to Cal until Elizabeth can come off. There she goes. Don't want to, Elizabeth.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, yeah, my apologies. I'm doing this on my phone, so it's nigh on too impossible sometimes to get to the right screen. So my apologies. I do think that it's really problematic that they're making our area as unfriendly as you can almost possibly imagine for people who have disabilities and, and/or the elderly. I think that's really a problem. It is maybe even an actionable problem in a court of law. So I, I think that it would be great if we could get them to reconsider on the basis that this is gonna cause them a lot of grief potentially and probably not as much grief as it's worth. It's really all I have to say.
Mm-hmm. Good points. Thank you. Cal?
Yeah, I would, I would urge the, um, maintaining of the bus stops as to be in the resolution. I'd like to see it there. Um, it's not advertised very well, um, on the Wamata site, um, and they kind of wanted to have people lump it in with their, um, with the other better bus, uh, routing, you know, comments, but, um, I think it needs to be, uh, amplified. And the other thing I'll say is that, and I, I testified, uh, this afternoon at the, one of the Wamata Zoom hearings. What I didn't say was this change in the E four, um, is small for them, but has a mu- very significant impact on us. And I think that ought to be amplified also in the narrative stuff in the resolution.
Great, absolutely. Ron Con?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just wanna say, Wamata says they will read and consider every, uh, comment, but that's no assurance at all that our changes, no matter how valid, uh, will be made. So we need to look at this as more of a full court press. Uh, if that truly gets their attention in ways that cannot be denied, that might include, you know, enlisting the powers of our council, councilperson, our mayor, our ANC's been great with resolutions, and Lisa's been very, Chair Gore's been very supportive of, of bus service, but I, I, I think, uh, we just need to approach this in a more, most powerful manner we possibly can to make our, our, our preferences known in this matter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Completely agree. Thank you. Um, I just wanna add, um, Jim, echo what everybody said and amplify it by a hundred. I mean, I, I think the resolution, first of all, is very well done. You guys did a great job, captured a lot of information that, um, new information and historical information. Um, I don't know in terms of the bus stops. I don't, I know the new rule, six hundred feet between stops. I don't know the condition of the stops in our area. Um, I would maybe look at those and make sure all of our stops are in good condition also. Um, and where we need to push back, I don't know if you guys did that. I read the resolution, but I don't know it, you know, detailed in my head. If you all had recommendations, um, where stops should not be taken up, or if you're just saying blanketly, we don't want any stops taken up, but also keep in mind the conditions of those stops. Um, I would really amplify what Elizabeth said in terms of disabled and elderly community. The changes that we've gone through in terms of just, so I was, you know, saying I was a Lafayette mom, just from when my son was using the bus to get to school to now is absolutely ridiculous, absolutely hands down ridiculous. The way our bus service has changed, and that's just kind of like post-COVID, so within the last few years. Um, I would also go back to, if you guys didn't, the old resolution, I think where we quoted or had put the mayor's comments when, when she came to do her budget, I believe it was at her budget presentation for Chevy Chase, where she talked about the process that Wamata used to remove the E six route and the public hearing, which is what Megan talked about. Um, I remember her specifically mentioning that, and that kind of piqued her curiosity and seemed to be something she grabbed on to and something that she said she would listen to. So I think, you know, as an ANC and a commission, we need to go back to that. But if we put that in a resolution, just as a reminder, you know, every time we hit it, we hit it like a drumbeat to put that in there. Um, and then.
Lisa, wait, Lisa, you, we, we should put what in there now? The mayor's comments?
Yeah, she specifically commented on this. And she specifically commented on Wamata's process for removing the, um, E six route, making those route changes during the pandemic without the public process. Now, we have that video in the archives on ANC, so it's all in there. And I believe the last set of resolutions that we had, I believe we put her comments in there as well. But just as a reminder for us, and we need to send this resolution to everybody. Um, but just also to remind folks that Ward Four is having a town hall for Wamata. Um, it's next Thursday at six thirty at Coolidge High School. I am begging everyone to come out to that town hall. I don't know what the format's gonna be. I don't know how long Wamata's gonna be there, or, you know, if they'll let folks speak. But this community needs to show up. They need to show up. You need to, you know, bring your signs, bring your posters, and, and really show that we want these lines, you know, these changes, um, you know, reverted. I mean, this is, you know, our opportunity, because I, I don't believe they have been doing town halls like this previous, so at least we got them, you know, at a town hall meeting. And that's Thursday, six thirty at Wamata. I mean, on Coolidge.
I want to make sure that people realize what you said next Thursday. It's, it's in two days.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the twenty seven. I'll put it in the chat.
Yeah, it's in two days, and, and you need to RSVP. I sent information on that to, uh, everyone in our bus transit group, but maybe it, should I send it to?
If you, if you have the, um, I'll, let me cut it and paste it in the chat. And if you can put it, I don't know if it's gone out on our listserv and Chevy Chase listserv or Chevy Chase chatter.
Okay, well, we'll follow up, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I'll, I'll specifically on that speak to the Knollwood residents who, um, uh, Chair Gore, as you know, and Commissioner Nash, you also know, have long advocated for the restoration of the E six bus. They also depended on the E six bus. They've come to our ANC meetings when we have ourselves, um, passed resolutions and approved letters to send to Wamata on that issue. Very important if we could get a group of them to go to the meeting on Thursday and be in person and, and, and present their concerns. The one thing I will say, uh, about the, the new routing of the M four is that it will go to MacArthur High School. Um, the, the problem with anyone who wants to go to MacArthur now, um, instead of Jackson Reed, is currently there's no bus service, and it's five miles over there. So there is one slight advantage. There are a few other routing advantages that we haven't talked about. I agree with, uh, what the resolution states and the sympathies and concerns of the community. I did want to point out there are a couple of advantages for folks here, kids who want to get to, you know, MacArthur High School in particular. Right now, there's no bus service there.
Yeah, and so, you know, what we decided to do in the resolution was to not get into or mention things that were either positive or where there might be a division of opinion. Uh, we're, we're, we're silent on that, um, for obvious reasons. Uh, I, I, I don't want to say the better bus is all bad, but it really does seem to screw our ANC, uh, particularly hard, uh, mo- more than any other ANC, I think.
That was one thing that was in the resolution, Jim, that I would ask if you, if we don't have proof, if we could strike that and just say, um, I mean, you could say it's, it, um, you know, is very impactful to our resolution. I just don't know the comparison against other ANC's.
Okay.
Cal?
All right. In Rock Creek West, we are the most disadvantaged. There's one other one that's also disadvantaged, which loses its local service around, uh, Globe Wood Park. That's three B. But three G, three and four G is by far and away, uh, the one that has the most impact.
Okay.
Best of the park.
Yeah, if we want to put the caveat in there, Rock Creek West, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Any other, to get us back on track, any other comments, commissioners? Community members? Okay. Um, Jim, do you want to move this into a vote?
Okay, so I, I do, but let me, um, but before I do that, I, 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 I'm not sure how the process works, but do, should, do, do I hear that there is support for adding something about bus stops, uh, the bus stop removal, the six hundred foot rule? Or, or should we leave that out for now?
Um, either way, it's not gonna change my opinion of the resolution. I would suggest, if you have time, if you can add that. I didn't offer any of that as a friendly amendment, so it's just my comments on what you could add to the resolution. Um, I don't know if any commissioner brought up anything that's, um, I don't think anybody brought up any friendly amendments, so.
O- o- one other quick thing I would just ask about, because I don't recall from the resolution, Commissioner Nash, so correct me on this. Um, at, uh, Nebraska and Military, given the new routings, that intersection, um, and the bus transfers that are going to happen there are going to create a, a totally new circumstance that I don't understand yet how Wamata is going to provide for that. Um, in terms of people crossing the street, people congregating on the corner, it's a super busy intersection now. And I would highlight that needing special attention by Wamata to ensure safety for pedestrians and people making transfers.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, other people have noticed that it is one of the most dangerous intersections for pedestrians in our ANC. And now they're deciding to make it a major bus transfer point, if this goes through.
Right.
So, um,
Maybe a friendly amendment to highlight that.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, we, we'll do something like that.
Okay.
And, and I'm thinking, you know, just a little further up from that, the bus shelter at, which a lot of St. John's kids use, Oregon and Military is very small. I mean, those kids are like right on the edge of Military Road.
Hmm.
Um, so, um, maybe, and if what Bruce is saying, i- is that shelter gonna be sufficient? So maybe when you think about the shelter conversation, are they currently sufficient?
At Military in Oregon.
And Bruce's location, Nebraska and Military as well.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I got that one. Okay.
Can we vote?
Okay, so yeah, I, I, I'm ready to move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Um, all those in favor, commissioners and, um, commissioners that don't have your camera on, can you, um, just call out a vote? Zach, what's your position?
Yes.
Okay, so that's six zero.
Okay, I will, th- th- thank you all, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll make the, the modifications.
All right. Thank you. Six zero zero. Um, okay, brief presentation by Alan Seaver on removing lead water pipes.
Thank you. Alan Seaver, fifty-four oh six, Thirty-Ninth Street. It really is time to eliminate lead from our drinking water by removing lead service lines from in front of our houses. I won't trouble viewers with what I learned overseeing publication of editions of standard methods for the examination of water and wastewater for the professional society sponsors in the nineteen seventies. The DC government, DC Water and the Biden administration have set the goal to remove lead lines by the year twenty thirty. Major resources are included in the National Infrastructure Program. DC Water signs at McBrewder's parking lot advertise free lead pipe removal. Related DC Water efforts have not gone as well as hoped. Their internet pipe map shows relatively few verified lead or non-lead lines and a mass of suspected this, that, or unknown types of pipe. It doesn't take a statistician to describe DC Water's map as not at all helpful. It's just the product of a hundred years of jumbled reports without enough understanding of lead poisoning. And perhaps worse, the legalistic right of entry form published at DCWater.com/lead turns out to be an actual deterrent because homeowners suspect they might meet a small backhoe unexpectedly tearing up their front yards. And managers at DC Water tell me they are changing that entry form as well as methods for pipe replacement. They're now using modern trenchless horizontal drilling, direct drilling equipment that allows new one-inch copper pipe to be installed efficiently while protecting plantings and hardscape. It's up to them to manage pipes in the streets, but we own our land and they have to respect it. So we need to take our part in the lead pipe removal process, best as groups of neighbors. DC Water offers advice to homeowners to determine whether pipe from the meter in the tree box to the house is metallic lead. Neighbors should converse and organize in blocks or substantial sections of long street blocks as willing participants in removal research and planning. Homeowners need to sign up for pipe replacement that daughter will, the DC Water will do free of charge. Homeowners who elect to arrange and pay for lead pipe replacement can do so. My neighbors in the fifty-four hundred block of Thirty-Ninth Street are well along this path. It is election season in DC. Incumbent office holders and candidates should be asked what they intend to do about lead pipe removal in Chevy Chase. Both council members, Matt Fruman and Janice Lewis George, are on the DC Committee on Transportation and the Environment where lead pipe legislation has been languishing for years. Why is that? Only if we get together soon.
Alan, I was told to give, give you a three minute.
One sentence. I have one sentence. Only if we get together soon and pursue lead water service pipe replacement will we have a prayer of succeeding by twenty thirty. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I know y'all have been working hard on that. We got a long way to go. Um, and I, you know, lead in water, lead in soil, um, lead in houses is a, a big issue, especially in the district with our homes, older homes. Okay, next is, um, update on the RFP Community Center Library. Peter, that's you and me.
Just very quickly to try to get ourselves back on schedule. The, the most important, uh, thing to know is that for a second time, or the third time, the, the deadline for, um, responding to the request for proposals has been moved by DMPED now to the end of August. And I have heard that it could well be moved again, so that we may well be into the fall before DMPED closes the door on, on proposals. And I don't think we know at that point how long it is before the, this ANC and the community actually sees the, 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 the proposals that DMPED has, but in any case, this, we are, we're watching this closely, um, and it's been moved off yet again.
Yep.
So I don't know.
That's good. That's, I don't have anything additional. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, just a very quick point, um, not on this per se. Since our last meeting, I've been asked by a number of constituents if the commission is absolutely done with respect to any modification of our April twenty-fifth resolution, uh, regarding the zoning amendments. And I have indicated that I had nothing to report, that there was nothing new. Um, we discussed this at, at the last meeting amply and decided not to modify the resolution. There was a vote of the commission on that. Um, but I just wanted to bring it up again and ask the commissioners if, in fact, um, we are done, because the next meeting of the zoning commission is, is July eleventh. We have a meeting scheduled for July eighth. If this commission wished to say something further, we would have one more bite at the apple. If we don't, that's fine. Um, I think we, just speaking for myself, need to be mindful of our, the consequence of not acting, of not doing something else. Commissioner Goslin and I have represented this to you fairly amply, so I'm not going to go on about it tonight. But I do want to plant the thought that if the commission were interested, we could revisit this, uh, at the next meeting.
And I, I, I second what Bruce just said. I think it's very likely that, I think it's very likely one way or the other, whether we speak again or not, at, uh, July eleven, um, the zoning commission passed. Um, uh, so, uh, but, but we have a meeting, uh, July eighth. I think Bruce and I would be happy to try to craft something by talking to all of you beforehand, but, but we got shot down last time, and so that's where it stands at the moment.
And I have drafted, I have drafted a letter that would come from me, uh, just as speaking as one commissioner in support of our April twenty-fifth resolution, which is our, our current position still. If we as a commission decide not to do anything, I will still advocate for what we previously had, had urged the zoning commission to consider.
So Bruce, I'm sorry, your, your, your plan is to re-resurrect the last resol- So Bruce, I'm sorry, your 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 plan is to re-resurrect the last resolution that bailed on a tie vote?
No, no, no. We're discussing potentially simply having further conversation with commissioners to see if there is any interest in taking any further action, whatever that would be, uh, to go to the zoning commission prior to the July eleventh meeting.
And I'm sorry, that would be something that you and Peter would circulate between now and a week before the July meeting so that we can look at it and then say, yeah, let's put it on the agenda?
The first thing we do, Michael, is talk to everybody. I mean, I, right now, there's, I mean, it's a tie vote. I mean, there's a, so that there's not a, it's not an issue. We we want to find out whether there's any give among the commissioners to consider something. And let me just say that, you know, the difference between what Bruce and I proposed, uh, on June ten and where we where this mission was on April twenty-fifth is really small. But what Bruce and I were trying to take up, uh, take advantage of was that both of us went through nine or ten hours of zoning commission hearings, and at least on the April twenty-ninth hearing, what both of us heard was some willingness to entertain some modest compromise. And so, I mean, I, but what we proposed June, uh, tenth was really small, basically five feet uh, uh, over where we were on April twenty-fifth. So, um, uh, it really, I think we're both motivated by the fact that we heard some willingness. Who knows how deep.
Are you asking us to vote on that now, or are you just saying?
No, no.
And I think we need to. No, not Lisa, not on the resolutions, but on voting on whether to consider putting something on the agenda on July eight?
Advice about what 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 I think what Bruce is asking, and Bruce, you can speak for yourself, is I we're we're just asking, should we be, should we talk it among you guys, or is it a waste of time?
I don't think it's a waste of time. I think we're, well, I think it's slightly a waste of time right now because we're not in a position to talk about it. Um, I will go to Commissioner Nash. He's had his hand raised politely. But my vote is if you guys got some additional information you want to share, if you want to redraft another resolution, start circulating the conversation. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get it, you know, here tonight. Um, Commissioner Nash?
Yeah, I beg you to stop talking about it now at this meeting. We've already spent way too much time on this at our meetings. I'm willing to talk to you, but if we spend more time on it now, I am not going to want to talk to you about it. I had a question, uh, for you, Peter. Do you have any sense of why they have delayed it now a second time and may do it a third, the RFPs?
No, I don't. But these are two separate things.
I know they are. I'm changing the subject on purpose, Peter.
Oh, I no, I do not know. The answer is I do not know why, uh, uh, they're doing.
But we can, we can get that and, um, and put that out to the commission and the community.
Okay, want to move on?
Yes. All right, um, Commissioner Sherman, discussion of the Maray ECC grass turf issue.
So I'm looking at the time. It's eight eighteen. We're scheduled to stop at eight thirty. There are a couple other issues. Um, I, um, believe this matter needs to come up for conversation, uh, discussion and possible vote, uh, by the by the commission. Um, I, uh, in in good conscience, having now, um, held three town halls between March and May, um, over six hours with fifteen national experts looking at the relative merits of artificial turf versus natural grass playing fields, uh, including hearing from leading national scientists. Um, I, uh, again, in good conscience, have to bring up to the commission the issue of asking Maray again to reconsider the decision to use artificial turf in favor of of grass. Uh, this mirrors the conversation, as all of you know, in in great part that we had regarding Lafayette um, and has other complexities, of course. Um, so I have prepared, shared, um, uh, with everyone, uh, a lot of background that comes directly out of the six hours of due diligence, looking at these issues, seeking to inform our collective view as to the advisability of of using grass. Um, so what I would ask us to do tonight is to acknowledge this as an issue that we'll address uh, in full at the next meeting, since it's eight twenty. Uh, there's not time to go into this in full right now. Um, and that way we can continue, I can circulate further the document and we can, um, uh, have additional conversations. But look ahead to the next meeting.
Yeah. So Bruce, let me just say, that would be my recommendation that we put this off until July eighth. I would also encourage you to work with some of the commissioners. I've heard, um, from a few of them and, um, you have to on email. I think it's still broad for some of the folks. Um, so I think this is a resolution that you could probably get passed through the ANC, but I think the resolution needs some tweaking, um, before folks are, you know, you know, before we get there. Um, we go to Commissioner Nash.
Yeah, I I want to, uh, salute Commissioner Sherman, with whom I often disagree for his leadership on this issue. Uh, and it it has, it really has, uh, altered my my view. I went to one of his town hall meetings. And I I am, even though I'm a big supporter of Maray and ECC and their project there, uh, I am not on board with, uh, that artificial turf thing. I think it's really important that a Maray and ECC both be invited to our meeting if we're going to take up a resolution on this. Because, uh, it is, there is another side to it, uh, and I think they should be given an opportunity to say, you know, uh, either or both, why, uh, they want to go this way, at at least for now.
Let me just indicate that that would certainly, uh, be fine by me. I don't know if you saw my reply to your earlier question on email, Commissioner Nash, about this, but.
I did see it, but that's not the same. I I you can do that in your town hall meetings. If we're going to take up a resolution here at an ANC meeting, I I feel that they need to be here and make their case before us and everyone else.
Right, right, right. Well, just again, for those who aren't aware of the background on this, um, I I have through the town halls and engagement with Maray, um, repeatedly sought to, uh, hear their their views, their concerns. I've memorialized those in the background to this resolution. These town hall meetings are recorded, um, and so forth. Um, but anyway, yes, I take your point, Commissioner Nash.
And, um, I'll just, you know, historically, that's how the ANC has tried to work when we've had topics that, you know, are are highly controversial. We do try to present both sides, you know, at the meeting. So, um, if we can do that, if that's what the commissioners want, I think we should, you know, do that. There might be additional information. I would definitely like to talk to them about some of the earlier commitments that they made to the ANC on this issue. So, um, that's my two cents on it.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Gore, we can then hold off until, uh, July eighth. One, one, um, uh, favor I would ask of my fellow commissioners. If you haven't watched the town halls, please take the time to do so. Um, particularly, well, all of them. Uh, the first was in-depth on safety issues. The representatives from the Synthetic Turf Council, from the manufacturers of the products that both Maray and the city, the district we'd use at Lafayette were represented. Uh, there were, um, environmental experts, again, leading scientists. And then the final one was with seven national experts on natural grass playing fields. So I just want to be very clear. What I'm representing to you are not my pet views on the subject. I have sought to exhaustively research this and make available to all of you six hours of testimony from experts that frankly, if the council um, were holding a hearing on this, these are the people they would invite to to hear from. So please, um, take the time to listen to these because I think you'll be informed all the way around on the matter.
And, um, I agree with you. I just, I just want to add one thing, and I don't want to offend anyone when I say this. That, um, is excellent that you did, you know, the process and procedure that you did. But I think what Commissioner Nash is getting to sometimes is the trade-off when you don't do that process with the ANC, because it is the ANC that has to make that decision. And I know some of us were attending the town hall. Some of us couldn't attend the town hall. When it's an ANC-sponsored event and it's ANC-led, we as an ANC have the opportunity to ask the questions, to voice the questions in a more official format. When it's done outside of the ANC, you still have to bring that process back to the ANC. So it's almost, you know, I don't want to say a duplicative effort, but it can be a duplicative effort. We went through that. It would be like if Commissioner Zeldin held the discussion about Military Road School as a single-member district commissioner, as opposed to that process coming through the ANC. We would have said, okay, your process is great. We love the information you gather. But we would have demanded that come back through the ANC because we have to answer to it as the ANC. So I would just, you know, any commissioner has a right to to run their commission, do their thing the way they want to do it. But when it comes back to the ANC, you're probably going to get this type of discussion where people want that process and those, you know, discussions to come back to them before the ANC committee as a whole. So I'll just say that. Um, Commissioner, uh, Goslin and Ferguson?
Well, I, let me say, um, there's been, this is sort of a non-discussion discussion because we're talking about moving it off to July eight. Um, Bruce, I understand you've held a lot of these, um, sessions. I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I understand there's a great deal of expertise, uh, worried about, uh, artificial turf. Uh, I suspect there's also a great deal of argument on the other side, too. I said at the, at the very beginning, when you started talking about bringing this up at this meeting, and now we're going to do July eight, that I would be happy to support a resolution that that either has a balanced, uh, account of the two sides in it or no account of the two sides, but a call to all owners and operators of fields, either turf fields or fields that could be converted to turf in our community, including St. John's College High School, including Blessed Sacrament Elementary School, um, uh, um, to re- to consider reconsider, um, uh, grass. I'm fine with that. Um, the aiming the the muzzle just at Maray seems unfair. Um, and, um, I, you said, uh, in our exchange, when you were considering this resolution, that you would take care of this matter, you would write the resolution such a way that my concerns were addressed. But that isn't the resolution we have before us. And I do hope that before, between now and July eighth, you reconsider, um, the way you frame this resolution. We have my vote if you do, but, um, this resolution as now drafted does not, will not, I won't support.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, thanks. Uh, since Commissioner Sherman, you know, asked the favor of us fellow commissioners to, you know, uh, be informed about his, um, turf meetings. I I also want to repeat a request and just a, you know, a favor from other commissioners that, you know, I I got this resolution, um, I think it was sent Sunday after five PM. Um, and that's, you know, it's a lengthy resolution. I had, I didn't have time Sunday night and I was working all day Monday. And so we've seen kind of a pattern where, you know, you can throw up a topic on the agenda, but there's no resolution. You know, we all know these topics, but they're quite vague. And what really matters is the specific language. And so I'd really ask all commissioners to put as best you can, put the language of the resolution out a week in advance for the community to look at this specific language. Uh, because it's really important. It's also selfishly, I I just, it's hard for me to read and 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 be truly informed about a resolution if it's sent, you know, Sunday evening. Um, and again, my my issue is, I I I think about our statutory, uh, what we're here to do. We're here to advise the the DC government and government bodies. And my concern is I have no issue, um, advising DGS, DPR, DCPS about what they should do as a government. But my concern here is I don't see our statutory authority to advise private entities. Um, so I, my interest in next, and next time we take this up will be which government agency we're going to be advising.
I think we could move on.
Yeah. And let me just, because I, you know, a comment came through in the chat that, you know, thinks that we're being, or I'm being critical of Bruce. I'm not being critical of Bruce. I applaud his effort. He's done what he's supposed to have done as a single-member district commissioner. My comment is regarding the ANC's process. And you've heard commissioners say that they want to hear the balance of the two perspectives when it comes to this issue. Um, that's just simple. We either invite the two bodies or we don't invite them. Um, if we don't invite them, there'd be some commissioners that will not vote on this topic. Um, the other thing that I did is I I pointed to a process that we had that was very similar, very controversial in the community, where we did it as a commission body. And that's how the commission, you know, operates. That's how the commission wants to hear this particular topic. And I think Commissioner Sherman will honor that. Um, we've all voted, um, previously on this resolution or something similar. We we told him what we would need in order to vote on this, and I I think we'll get there. So I don't think anyone is being critical of you, Bruce. I hope you don't personally take that. My role to you as chair is to tell you the historical context and what what's going on inside the commission. And I'm sure you're taking that to heart. So I appreciate that.
I I I take that to heart, and the idea of bringing a resolution to the commission as a whole is, of course, to bring it, uh, here for everybody's consideration. And, um, I would, um, so I look forward to working with everybody on it. We'll, we'll, we'll move forward and 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 work on it. I I will just say, though, that I I would, again, if you listen to the town halls, um, uh, they are, I believe, balanced across all perspectives. Commissioner Goslin, they are, uh, you will find the turf industry amply represented as well as Maray in those conversations. But your point holds, Chair Gore, about bringing this to the commission.
Thank you, and we will work with you. All right, Trey, last word.
Just if there are questions in advance that you know that you want to have Maray answer, we love to get those. You know, Lisa, you mentioned previous commitments. Like, that would help us respond, um, to any to any question.
Right, yeah. And I'm going back way, way, way back. So I will, I will look at those old videos and, um, try to get that to Commissioner Sherman so he could present that to you. Okay, um, Commissioner Ferguson, your hand is still up. Were you done?
Nope, yeah, I'm sorry, all done.
Okay, thank you. Um, and staying with you, Commissioner Sherman, um, discussion of the National Park Service golf course?
Right now, again, this is going to be, sorry, Commissioner Zeldin, do you have your hand up?
I'm sorry.
I just know, I just wanted to remind everyone, I I have my heart stopped now. So I apologize, but but I have to go at eight thirty, as I indicated at the top of the hour.
Very good. So this issue, um, is one of, um, new, it's new to us. It's not new to Chevy Chase or to, uh, uh, folks who live close to Rock Creek Park, and that is the proposed renovation of the golf course. Um, it is a matter that a lot of people have weighed in, as I think we've all seen on the listserv. Uh, colleague, uh, commissions across the the park have taken this matter up. Um, and because my just, my jurisdiction, my single-member district, if you take a look at how the district is drawn, actually extends into Rock Creek Park and cuts across the park to the area where the golf course would be. Um, I I think it's important, at least that I, uh, take a look at this and the commission take a look at this. So, um, Commissioner Goslin, you had, uh, mentioned that one of your constituents, um, uh, I believe Will Smith, is that correct? Um, is from the National Links Trust, and he was going to be part of the conversation. I see him there. Um, Will, how are you? Uh, and and Devise, who is, uh, with Rock Creek Park Golf Course for All, the citizens group that has expressed its views about the proposal by the National Park Service to, uh, renovate the golf course, uh, is also on the call. So I thought if we have time that we could hear briefly from each of them, but go ahead, Commissioner Goslin.
Listen, I think we ought, in addition to elevating both of them, Michael and Michael, I'm going to hatchet your last name, Statuets, uh, of the National Park Service, uh, is also online.
Well, do, if they don't have a presentation, they don't need to be elevated. They just need to come off.
We.
Come on camera.
Right. And I think, um, one thing that we should, and Chair Gore, you comment now. Right, and I think, um, one thing that we should, and Chair Gore, you comment now on the time, how much time you think we have. We could do this one of two ways, let me propose. That would be not to do presentations now if they're PowerPoints. Because that's going to take us a lot of time, but rather to have some opening comments that will help frame this. And then come back and have a little more time later on this matter, when we could give it twenty minutes or whatever it would, it would need, if that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Um, so, um, that, that being the case, um, uh, Will Smith, if you would like to. Again, kind of give us an opening perspective on the National Links Trust initiative, uh, here, so everybody understands that. And then, and we would go to you for the perspective from your group.
Sure, um, happy, happy to, uh, uh, give it a little perspective, little, little background. Um, my name is Will Smith. I am a constituent in this ANC. I have kids at Lafayette School. Um, I co-founded, uh, National Links Trust, which is a nonprofit. Whose mission is to positively impact community through affordable and accessible golf. Uh, we started it five years ago to respond to an R F P. Uh, put out by the National Park Service to operate and rehabilitate the three public golf courses in Washington, D C. Uh, as many people, uh, might not have known, um, until this most recent controversy, one of those is in actually Rock Creek. Um, and it has, uh, fallen under disrepair. Uh, basically, uh, there's been decades and decades of deferred maintenance. Um, basically, nothing is, basically no capital improvements have been made there for, for, for many, many decades. Um, including any sort of tree management. Um, and there is a compete, competition between trees and turf grass. Um, right now, uh, it is far and away the, the most, uh, poorly utilized of all of the three public golf courses in D C. Doesn't have the amenities that the others do, like a driving range, uh. And in fact, uh, four of the holes on the, the historic golf course, again, this is a, a golf course that has been on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, it's over one hundred years old. Um, we, we, when we, when we took over in twenty twenty, uh, nine of the holes were closed down. We have reopened. Uh, five of them, but this place is in desperate need of, uh, a, a very large, uh, scale investment. Um, and that is what, uh, we, along with the National Park Service, have been working on for years. Um, we've gone through, uh, an extensive environmental assessment, complete with, uh, an extensive public comment period. Um, and we are now, um, on, on the brink of being able to move forward with that project. Um, why do we want to do this project from a National Links Trust perspective? It, it's because we believe, um, that we can positively impact the community. What does that mean? That means doing things like our Jack Varmen Workforce Development Program, which we run at one of the other golf courses, Langston. Uh, which gets people from the community, kids from underserved communities, gives them the opportunity for summer jobs, summer income. But also teaches them life skills and job skills, uh, that can be done through, through teaching them, uh, about the business of golf. Um, we had our first Evan Scholar come out of that program, which is a, uh, uh, a complete, uh, college scholarship, including room and board. Um, we, uh, you know, there, there, we, there, like, there are just so many things that we can do. Um, First T, which is an incredible pro, uh, program, um, that teaches life skills, uh, and golf to, to, to youth. Um, uh, is going to be headquartered out of the improved Rock Creek Golf Course. They'll be able to triple their impact, um, in terms of the number of kids that, uh, are serviced, uh, that, 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 that go through there. Um, you know, again, I, I don't want to go on too long. I know we're pressed for time. Um, but really, this is a, this is a, a question of equity. This is about trying to make sure that everyone in our city has equal access to green space, recreation space. And golf, even though golf might not be the most popular, uh, for some people, people on here. Um, we believe in the, the broader definition of sustainability, which combines the environment, the e- economics and equity. And we believe we've come up with a solution that marries those, that sits right in the middle of those three circles and, uh, is a win-win for everybody involved.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you very much. Um, and if you would give us your perspective and, uh, in a few minutes. And then we'll, uh, pledge to come back to this issue and give it a little bit more time.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherman, for bringing this, uh, this matter forward for the ANC. And I appreciate everyone's time and attention. Rock Creek Park Golf Course for All is a coalition of neighbors. Volunteers, scientists, golfers, youth leaders, and local nonprofits. Like the D C Sierra Club, Washington Parks and People, Nature Forward, D C Bird Alliance, City Wildlife, Ward Eight Woods Conservancy. D C League of Women Voters, on and on. It's a, it's a large coalition who are very concerned about this rehabilitation plan. It's less a rehabilitation than a transformation, in our opinion. We certainly want this golf course to receive the attention it deserves. I totally agree with, with Will Smith. The deferred maintenance has been just, it's just disastrous there. The overgrowth of vines and, and other invasives have, uh. Have not been attended to for decades. And so now it's time to address those and to make improvements to the golf course. Certainly, we agree, but this is a golf course that is unique in the sense that it's in the middle of the national park. And so it's not like East Potomac. It's not like Langston. It's a different, it's a different context entirely. And the removal of a third of the trees from the course is something. A lot of people are very distressed about, including the golfers. So we're finding that the golfers who play the course were not surveyed in the planning process. And our coalition has actually gone on to the course and interviewed some golfers, just, hey, do you know what the plan is? And they were shocked at the, at the prospect of removing the trees, which give the golf course so much character. Um, when they were asked what improvements they would like to see, they talked about, yes. Uh, the cart paths need to be repaved. We need better signage. Gosh, it would be good if the restrooms were upgraded, but there was no talk about a huge fifty bay. Driving range lit at night inside the national park. There was no discussion about, uh, the kinds of improvements, taking out an entire forest stand. To put in a new maintenance shed and pavilion. Uh, it's just an, uh, it's an overbuilt plan that the community. I'm sorry.
We have a two minute, uh, limit.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Nash. Yeah, um, yeah, I'd really like an opportunity to come back and, and speak again. On this, uh, because I think, I think it, for both, for both perspectives, I think more time is needed. Thank you.
No, I, I, I agree, and we, we sort of prefaced this piece by saying that we were over time. And, uh, we do appreciate both of, uh, you being here and, and addressing the community. So perhaps, uh, Chair Gore, we could put this, uh, either on the July eighth or the next, uh, second meeting in July. Uh, and come back to this so that, uh, uh, there's more time to, to, to discuss it and go into detail.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to end the discussion here? Do you want to take comments from people?
We could, we can take comments. I'm just, uh, doing another time check in terms of how much time we have for that.
Then why don't, why don't we just put it, put the whole thing off? I mean, if we're going to ask these people to come back and I, I actually. Yeah. As, um, Will, who is a constituent and who, uh, I have great admiration for, had more time. Um, I think that we are miscalling her. She, I think both of them should have done presentations. So, um, if the two of you would, um, bear with us and come back on July eighth. Um, I think we can have a fuller, uh, of.
Well, three, because, um, National Park Service as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, um, I do want to add that William Exburton, who is a constituent. Asked me to make this presentation because he's traveling out of the country tonight, and he was not, he was not able to be here.
Great, great. Well, and thank you for being here and Will, thank you for coming as well.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just want to say, uh, thank you guys for hearing us, and I, I know that there's broad public support in, in our constituency. We've, we've circulated a, a letter, and it's amazing how many people are supporting it from the two zero zero one five. So we're, we're excited. We know we've got a good plan and we're always happy to come talk, uh, about it more. Because we're confident that we've done our work. We've done the right thing. This is the best solution for this project.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, ANC Committee Reports, um, Z D D. Let me ask you a question, Peter. Should we take this off committee report? I mean, what's the status of Z D D? Okay, so let's, if the commission doesn't mind, we'll remove this from committee reports. All right, race?
And, and do we at some point, Commissioner Goslin, just want to take up the issue of whether or not Z D D has lived its useful life?
I don't think it has. I think it does still have a useful life that we had. Think that, uh, but, but I may be proven wrong. Um, there is such division in the community that the last time I tried to mount a meeting. Half the people said they wouldn't come because the other half were coming, and so we ended up with more people. But I mean, you know, this, we, we're going to get sometime this fall proposals for the, uh, Mini Center Library. Besides the debate that we have here, having, um, a forum or, um. A little less directional, a little less formal conversation, I think is going to be. But, um, I, you know, if I'm proven wrong, we can decommission it and I will simply set up, uh. Uh, a, a rump group in my S M D to talk about it. But I mean, I think that is, as, uh, it's, uh, said, uh, about, uh. A Maray turf field issue, you know, bringing things, you know, keeping it within the orbit of the mission, I think is a good idea. Uh, even if the discussion is not formal, the way it's here. My pitch.
Okay, um, Race, Racial and Social Equity Standing Committee, Libby and Corinthia. Libby, you want to, Libby, Corinthia, you guys want to come off and give an update? All right, Transportation Committee?
Yeah, all right. Well, I already have told you a little bit about what the, uh, Bus Working Group is doing. Uh, we are also, uh, sending out flyers to encourage people to take the Wamata survey on the Better Bus Proposal. Uh, as for the Safety Working Group, uh, they have sent out a survey. And so far, there are thirty seven responses to that. Uh, I would like to be able to post the results of that when the deadline hits next month. On the, uh, ANC website. However, it is in a spreadsheet. And right now, that is a no-go, but maybe our new guy, uh, can help get us done.
We can put it in a chart format. Yeah, we can get it in a format to post it on the website for sure.
Okay.
Even if it's on a spreadsheet, we can, uh, do an image.
Okay, uh, well, that, that'll be great. Uh, that, that is, uh, still a live document, uh, uh, but we're, you know, we're getting. We're getting some responses on that. And that's it for my report.
Okay.
Bye, Jim. Um, it is on there and it is live. Um, I consulted with Man, our, our soon to be consultant on the website, and she taught me how to do it, so.
Yeah.
Oh, great. So now you can put spreadsheets on, okay. When, when this is completed, I'll be sending it to you. Great.
Awesome, great, okay. And Maray Project Task Force, Jenny?
Yep, um, we had, um, our task force meeting, uh, on the, uh, I can't actually even remember the date now, sorry. It was on the twelfth of June. Our next task force meeting is on July tenth. Um, during sort of in between the last couple of our meetings, there was a stop work order issued. Constr- uh, we discussed a lot of, of that in that process. It was lifted right as our meeting was starting. Um, and so construction resumed on the site, um, I believe on the seventeenth. Um, there are still community concerns, um, raised both at the task force meeting and since, um, about vibrations. Vibration monitors have been installed, but there's lots of questions from the community. There's even some questions from Maray for Department of Buildings. So Commissioner Sherman and Commissioner Gutman had a good idea to, not Commissioner, um, Task Force Member Gutman had a good idea to. Um, try to reach out and have D O B come and talk to us, and we are in the process of that. Um, Commissioner Sherman put out the invitation several times to have them come and talk with us. Um, we are also going, uh, to talk about transportation at our next meeting, um, and sa- traffic safety. Commissioner Nash has been chatting, um, with the Maray folks, but we'll get an update on that at our next meeting as well. And we'll have follow-up from the D O B meeting. Um, and there, uh, there was a community day, um, trash, uh, bulk removal that, uh, Maray. Announced and has happened since our last meeting that I'm sure we'll hear about. Um, and I think those are the major, um, issues that have come up in the task force. But feel free to correct me, Commissioners Nash or Sherman, or Commissioner Gore.
No, that, uh, good job as usual, Jenny.
Great. Um, and let me go back to Race. Um, we had a question, Cal, maybe you can answer it. That came in the chat earlier. Let me go back to it, because it was a direct to me. Um, a person attendee asked, when are the race meetings and are they publicized? Shouldn't they be publicized? How can one attend? Can you give the next meeting and where they're posted? Just, you know, kind of answer that question?
Well, I, I'm guessing they're posted under our, under the t- uh, tab in the, um. Uh, Standing Committees, uh, tab on the website, on the ANC website. The next meeting was moved, um. Because of some scheduling, um, I may, I maybe I'm mixing up with the Transportation Committee. No, our next meeting is our regularly scheduled meeting on July sixteenth. We meet the third Tuesdays of the month. From seven to about eight fifteen on Zoom, and anyone from the public is welcome. As you use the same link every time, which it should be posted in the same place as the meeting schedule for the rest of the year.
Okay, Peter, is that up to date?
No, it is not up to date, and we're not, we're, we're not up to date either with, uh, what's posted on the. Our website, nor are we up to date. I posted the last race meeting, the June sixth. Undesigning the red line one, but I don't think we're up to date with the videos of their meetings either.
Okay, so Bruce, if you could help with the video posting, Peter, I'll help you with getting the meetings updated. Because I know we had, I thought we had the meeting schedule on there as well as the Zoom link.
Sure, we have the meeting schedule on there, but I haven't posted any update, uh, since I've been trying to, um, learn the site. So I, I, I just, it's one of those tabs that I just haven't, uh, focused on, but I will. I mean, I, I mean, I, we should have, uh. You, you know, you have, you have all the meeting dates for twenty twenty four here.
Okay.
I don't know, you, Cal, you said to change it. This, this says the next one is July sixteenth. No meeting in August, September seventeenth, October fifteenth, November ninth, and December seventh.
But I think the announcements would be, um, also. As announcements are for other ANC meetings on the listserv, Chevy Chase Chatter and so forth. And also, um, I think we probably need to talk about keeping of minutes from those meetings. Um, uh, Cal, I know that's something that has come up before, uh, so just. A discussion around regularizing, you know, uh, raises procedures would be helpful, I think.
Well, let me, um, address that because they, committees don't need to do minutes and video. So they're doing video, they're doing, um, as far as I know. And Cal, you could correct me because I hadn't been involved in a while with race meetings. But, um, the meetings are recorded. So the recording serves as basically their meeting, their minutes and, you know, capturing all the details of what happens. That's why we need to get them posted as soon as the meeting occurs. Uh, because they're not, most of our committees are not doing formal minutes except for Maray. Maray is, you know, the committee that's on steroids, which is great. But, um, the minutes, I mean, the video will serve that purpose. And I believe they have been, Cal, uh, and I know Corinthia, you have your hand up. Um, they have been taking video of each meeting as they occur?
Yeah, and they have.
To the issue of notice, to address, uh, Bruce, that the, um, so Libby and Corinthia dutifully and diligently. Send out those notices to all those public places, um, every month. Um, uh, they may not always have the agenda, but they certainly have a meeting date and time and the link. So that goes out to all those places, the listserv and the other places and social media. Um, it just seems like it's just not posted on the ANC site itself.
Let me jump in. So for our regularly scheduled meetings, that's every, the third Tuesday of each month.
the third Tuesday of each month, it's on the ANC website. And the link to those meetings are there. So there's no specific reminder sent out because we have them every third Tuesday of the month. For special meetings such as the Undesign the Red Line meeting, which is an anomaly to our regularly scheduled meeting, we send those out on the communication methods. Secondly, I think as Lisa stated earlier, our meeting minutes are the videos. So whoever on the ANC posts those meeting minutes to the ANC site, I mean, the videos, those are the minutes. So we're not writing minutes. If anyone is interested in the meetings, you can watch the videos and I defer to the ANC, how those meetings meetings are put on the website. I don't have any insight to that. So that is all.
Yeah. So I'm remembering now, Lisa, that while you were still on the committee, you said, since we published our entire year's schedule and that was supposed to go on the site, we didn't actually need to send out monthly reminders unless we were making a change, even though they're still doing it, even though Libby and Corinthia often send those, those posts out. But I think that the thing that needs to be fixed is to get those, that meeting schedule and the link posted on the ANC site so anybody can get to it anytime.
Yeah.
I can, I can take care of that. But we, and we've really got to pick up. We got five meetings.
And I think, and the, and the last thing, Bruce, have you requested for any of the other committees to point out their operations or, or whatever you specifically ask on how they, how they meet? I just want to make sure you're, what you're requesting of Race, you're also requesting of other committees as well.
Well, I think the clarification that Chair Gore's provided here as to what is standard for committees or task forces is a good thing. That is that we have a difference across the various task forces and committees currently. So I was under the impression that it would be something that committees would do in terms of some type of record of what the proceedings were beyond the recording. But if not, then it's the video and the video is what we post and that's it.
Okay, thank you. I hope you don't bring this up again because I think this is like the third time we've told you the, the same thing.
Well, we haven't had clarification on it, Corinthia, to be honest. And so I just said, let me just add.
I told you, I told you this before. So I think I'm just getting a little frustrated that you keep like pressing things as if you haven't been briefed on it before. So I just want to point it out that this is like the third time that you've been told this.
Well, it wasn't clear to me what the procedure was. So now, now we have it.
Okay, so we'll move on. I know Race wanted to show, and I will ask either Libby or Corinthia to come on if you want the video shown and explained about Undesign series. I am more than happy to, so play that, but I cannot set that up. So if you guys want that played or we can try again at the next meeting, but somebody's going to have to set, set the stage up for the audience. I can't do that.
So I asked, I asked Libby if she sent me the video. I can play it from my computer, but I haven't gotten a response yet from her about that.
I just alert you that I think our time on this thing is going to, not, not our schedule, but literally the Zoom.
Um, I will, I will send the link to Peter or Lisa to play, but this is from the last ANC meeting where we asked Peter Goslin to share the video just to educate the committee on what Undesign the Red Line is because we're trying to get more members of the community to go and visit it. So I will send the link over again right now. And it's less than a one-minute video that can be shared.
I actually have the link. I just needed that set up.
Okay, thank you. We asked Peter to share this last meeting, but he was unable to share this to us. So I would like to invite everyone to watch this quick video about Undesign the Red Line. If you haven't had an opportunity to go down to the Cleveland Public Library to see it, we would like you to see it. The exhibit ends on July 11th. Thank you.
I'd make a small correction there. We tried, we asked Libby Martin to come on.
Hi, I'm Braden Crooks. I'm one of the co-founders of Designing the Lead, along with April D. Simone. And this is the Undesign the Red Line exhibit. We are so thrilled to have it here in Ward III in Northwest DC. This is a place that was not redlined. It was a place where racial exclusion happened that prevented many people of color from moving up for Northwest.
I am so glad that this exhibit is shining on a lot, shining a light on the history that has so often been overlooked.
I think it's particularly important to bring this exhibit to Northwest DC and Ward III because we are a mostly white affluent neighborhood. And we need to understand that that occurred by design, not by accident.
All right. Libby, can you, or Corinthia, can you tell us how long the exhibit is going to?
Our internet bill, huh? Oh, looks like you need Verizon on the internet. No surprise price hikes or hidden fees. Nobody likes surprises.
I live here.
Oh, please, switch to bio.
But the exhibit is going to be at the Cleveland Public Lib, the Cleveland Library until July 11th. I'm going to put the website in the chat. If you go to the website, you're able to see some of the programs that the exhibitors are putting on for people. There will be one tomorrow. So we encourage everyone to participate. I believe they say that middle school age is a good age to take children, if you would like to take your children down to the library to view the exhibit.
Okay. And what, do you know the hours of the exhibit?
It's the same hours as the library because it's inside. So I don't know the exact hours of the library.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to mention there are two more actual events they're having before the exhibit comes down. One is tomorrow on envisioning thriving communities today and looking ahead. That's at six o'clock. And then there's one on the following Tuesday on July 2nd at 6:30 on racial covenants.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you, Race. Okay, Commission Business Secretary Report? Commissioner Sherman, do you have anything?
I, I know I don't.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
He's flat. He's, he's off now.
Did we, so Commissioner Goslin, you put something in here, quarterly financial report bills. Is that leftover or is that current reimbursement to Goslin for Verizon hotspot?
I never got the paperwork for him. You know, didn't we vote on the quarterly financial report at the last meeting? I, I don't know. In any case, he's, he dropped off at 8:30.
Yeah, we can't do it. Okay. And for possible items for July 8th, Marais ECC Discussion, Washington Gas Presentation. And at some point, I don't know if you want to do MPS on the 8th or the meeting after that, but we'll look for that.
Oh, yeah.
I'd go ahead and put it down. Yeah, since we're plotting the the course of things at the moment.
Okay, so I would say July 8th, folks, is pretty full. I think we need to start narrowing this agenda. If we're going to go back to seven o'clock, narrow the agenda, give more of these topics, a little bit more fuller time for discussion. Marais ECC, the field turf purchase versus natural gas is probably going to take about 20, 25 minutes to 30 minutes for a full discussion on that alone. And the golf course, I think, warrants the same amount of time because what really didn't come up, and I know the community is very really wants to discuss are those trees. So that's going to be a full discussion on that. Commissioner Goslin?
And then two other business matters. I have a draft of a contract with Luis Chica for meeting tech. And I I have a man, it's like, Dalian, it's good. Dalian, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, has turned in a draft of a, of a engagement contract for the website stuff.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you all. So it is 9:05, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for staying and participating and hanging on till the end.
Right. Night.
Good night.